Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's only agenda item is interviewing the potential treasure collector candidates and likely taking a vote.
Hello.
Hi, Jenny.
Hi, my name's Matt.
Hi, Charlie Chase.
Greg Solomon.
We are the board of select. Generally, as we go through this, start off, we give you a chance to kind of just say a little bit about yourself. And then we'll go through some questions that will be asking everybody the same question. So we should try to use that to kind of get a basic ranking to give ourselves an idea of how we felt during the interview when we go back and start discussing the individual candidates.
Okay, that's fair.
So, if you'd like, go ahead and start with maybe where you're coming from.
Sure. Again, my name's Jenny. I live in O'Cam and stayed for one year of my life after I lived on the same road. My background is in corporate income tax and individual income tax, very boring stuff, I suppose. And I also have a background in insurance. Specifically, I worked in the auto insurance agency for five years. I worked as an individual tax preparer for two years. And I've worked in international tax for, oh, sorry, 11 years, sales and use tax for just one year.
Do you guys have any other questions before we get into this?
I like numbers.
Well, it makes a difference, actually.
Who doesn't like numbers?
You know, it does come down to...
I came up with a monthly payment before the car deal or bargain over car prices.
Oh, yeah.
I like numbers.
I've never met an Excel formula that I didn't like.
So, no, that makes, that's actually good because that's generally what these positions require. So if that's what you like, you're in the right field. All right, I guess we'll just start with question one is, please tell us why you're interested in becoming the next treasure collector? And what about Berry makes it a community you want to work in?
Well, Berry happens to be conveniently very close to my house in O'Cam. And my children especially love going to Berry Library. They go every week with my mother, who is, used to work at Sandy Arts, really, for the Berry set. For a number of years, I was involved with the Masonic Temple around the corner. I was in Hightower Bow. And I just really liked it. My sister lives in town. And...
Can't have that shut in the meeting. I don't believe we can.
Just trying to reduce the hallway noise.
Maybe if we prop it a little bit so it's not coming...
I think we can shut it. People are just welcome to come in, yeah. We can't lock them out, but...
I got you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Sorry, I applied for this position because I'm looking to make a career change. And I'm hoping to, for one, not send in nearly as much traffic as I do at present. And two, I'd like to be able to spend some more time with my family.
Want me to just keep reading through these or do you guys want to rotate?
Yeah, it doesn't matter who's reading. We're not gonna pretend like we're making these up as we go.
Right. Please describe your understanding of the role of treasure collector within a municipality.
My understanding is that at its most basic level, I would be collecting taxes and utilities based upon assessments from the court assessors. And I would be managing money. But I would think, like any position, that there's probably a lot more to it than just those basic characteristics.
What strengths would you bring to the position? How would these strengths support the role you've just described?
I feel that I'm very detail oriented. And I'm very thorough with my work. I am somebody who, I take a lot of pride in my work. And I have a drive to do well. And it's important for me to, nor to not be bored, to continue to learn and better myself. And I would certainly not want to mistake making mistake in this area with customers because it's vital function of the municipality.
Relax, you're fine.
Now, my shoulder's up to my ears. Yeah? Okay.
We need this one because we're just like anybody else.
How does what you've done in your past jobs pair you for the position of treasure collector?
Well, I certainly tilt with a lot of unhappy people.
That's, yes.
I generally am always putting out fires. Still, yeah, I do, with just not very happy people, revenue agencies, auditors. And my type of, my type of job is you have 60 things you need to get done in one day. And you just need to be able to multitask. So basically, what I'm saying is that I usually just find a way to get jungle, juggle a number of things at the same time and get the job done.
What appealed to you or interested you specifically about this position? What are you looking for in a new position?
I think, I'll be brutally honest, I'm looking for a new position where I am not going to be burnt out and work in quite a lot of hours at any given time during the year. I would like to have my personal time and my family time. Meaning that I would hope that I wouldn't be walking through, which was tends to happen in my job. My boss will see me walk up the door, send me an email and say, "Oh, we need this done tonight. Oh, and it's not your responsibility." But, yeah, you can work until 10 o'clock. That sort of thing. It's a strain on my family life.
Give an example during your employment history of when you had to think outside the box?
Well, this whole year has been thinking outside the box because I've been settled with tax reform. And nobody knows what they're doing, including myself. I've been working with a number of people in our organization, auditors, PWC, RR auditors, and read countless 965 rights and webinars and training. And nobody knows which way is up or which way is down. So we're just trying to muddle, muddle through. And I don't know, today everything got signed off on, so I guess I did something right at the end.
Could you describe your familiarity with mass general law statutes pertaining to municipal finance in Massachusetts?
I know that there is a Bureau of Municipal Finance and that they set the statutory deadlines. They, not print, but I guess print is the word, the template for the tax collection forms. I don't know off the top of my head what the regulations, regulations, sub-sections are that they deal with. But I actually was trying to read up on it prior to this interview. But, yeah, it's escaping me yet.
You open to training when available?
Yeah.
Describe your work habits, work style, and your ideal work environment. What type of tasks motivate you and why? What are some tasks in your current job that you did particularly well?
Tasks in my current job that I do appreciate really well are stock option analysis for our expatriate employees. We're basically under US GA rules. You can, for, you got to post up. Under fast due rules, employers receive a deduction, a 2020 year deduction when stock options best. But for tax purposes, it's not realized until stocks are actually exercised. However, for, we determined that our expatriates, because they're outside of the US, they fall under each country jurisdiction, you can actually take a deduction based on the day's investment. You don't have to wait until the stock options are exercised. So that has, that's very, very detailed, depending on employee, their agreement with the company. They can do work for a number of different countries. You need to come up with an allocation method. You need to know, everybody in the company is an expat in their specific situation and try to save the company some tax revenue. It's fun, actually.
I got you. It's back to learning the regulations?
Yeah.
And then knowing how to work with them?
Exactly.
Are there certain tasks that motivate you more than others?
Yeah, tasks that are more project-based and are learning motivate you more than others. Part of it is that, because I've been in my particular role for a while, I tend to see the same tasks repeatedly. So it's nice to see something new when you start.
Can you tell us about something that you failed at and how you handled it?
I had a project on country to country reporting last year that we started far later than we should have. And we ran into a number of problems. And I felt that we didn't, I, and my teammates didn't do a good job of foresight in realizing where our challenges rely. And as a result, we just really struggled to get, to meet our deadline and get the project done. And as a result of all of these last minute changes, we just don't have the best audit trail. And we will get audited because we get audited every year.
And how'd you handle that? What'd you do as you saw that coming? Did you make adjustments, like go look?
I was pretty frustrated because this particular project was something that was assigned at a higher level. And then a few days before the deadline was assigned to myself and I had to start from scratch. So I felt that I probably could have handled that better, had better communication with some of my issues instead of just trying to absolve all of the responsibility and just kill myself to get it done.
Can you give us an example of your ability to manage or supervise others?
Yes, I supervise indirectly two associates at the moment. I had one associate, well, her daily needs not a lot of support. So any given day, I'm working on my own tasks. I'm hoping to train two people. And then, because we're a large company, I'm generally taking a lot of phone calls and exterior correspondence. And it's, it's interesting. It makes it interesting, though, you know, we learn something new every day.
Describe your conflict resolution skills. How would you handle a confrontation from a coworker, subordinate, supervisor, public or board member?
Well, I'm not a confrontational person, so I would probably internalize it and beat myself, and beat myself self up over it. I think if I have time, if I have time to reflect, I like to talk things out. But I'm not, I'm not somebody who is certainly going to accuse anybody of anything.
If we were to speak with a current and/or former employer about you, how would they describe you? How would your colleagues describe you?
They would describe me as friendly, team player, and great with other. That's what I get in my performance appraisal, so I'm just reiterating, reiterating.
What is the most difficult thing you've had to do in the performance of your job?
I'm not fond of giving negative feedback. I don't, I don't want them to feel that they're doing a poor job or that they, not make mistakes. But I don't, yeah, when I do a lot of review work and just sometimes when you have someone who's learning and they really, it's a, it's a big change for them. They don't understand what they're doing at all. I don't like to tell them that they're doing a poor job. So just, for me, it's, I have, I worry too much that I'm not giving, I don't, that I'm not getting the constructive feedback. It's more I, you know, probably spent too much time trying to work, work them through and build them up. Be more, let them be more independent.
Sounds like you've acknowledged the need to be more independent.
Yeah.
Might be something to think about. Constructive is a good way, not just negative when they do something. But you gotta let people figure it out. It doesn't really help them. Not easy sometimes.
Describe your communication skills, both oral and written, and your ability to communicate with vendors, supervisors, coworkers, elected or funded officials, et cetera.
I think my communication skills are great. I think I, my, I have better written communication skills. Just, again, I'm not a very confrontational person. But I do, I will stand my ground when I speak to them. But I do, as probably noticed, I tend to be very soft spoken. So it's a lot of effort for me to speak loudly so that I can keep hearing me.
I think you convey, through writing or orally, you better convey your thoughts.
I can better convey my thoughts orally.
Please describe your experience and approach to preparing for audits or interview reporting.
Oh, when I was preparing for audits, that's a trick question. Well, I have, generally, we, I have prepared notes and we have review notes. And I write files, not files, sorry, reports that stay on file that I can later access. But I think the biggest thing is documentation. And because I currently work for a public company, so being an oxen is life. So everything in the sun needs to be documented. And I'm known to keep the same documentation in multiple different places just in case that somebody else comes along who doesn't know where to find it. I'm not very nice to trees.
I got you, though.
I like that initial response, I gotta say. I'm always preparing for the audit. That means you're keeping track of everything you do. Add into the answer for me right there.
I don't disagree at all. I like that answer. For what I do, just simple little things in minor little procurement from my other job that I have.
Yeah.
Project management stuff in our review and design docs. The first thing I'm looking at is what's somebody gonna look at if they didn't live it? And how are they gonna know if the story was written right? And did we follow the rules right? So I usually tend to have to make sure, I'll put that clause in the contract because otherwise, we're gonna have to do the work, make the contract and do the work. And, you know, prepare the reports for us, we'll review it, accept it, and then it goes in the file.
Yeah, we've had a very bad experience at work. So we've learned the hard way in that we have these three fiscal years, '02 to '05, that we cannot get rid of in our black hole years because we have almost no documentation for anything. And the best we can find are a photocopy of a tax form with scribbling and pencil all over it saying, "Not final." And because of an extended EPA case, we can't close these years. And unfortunately, review or presentation occurred during these years. And we keep getting audit query after audit query asking us about these years. We don't know. And I was in college and I can't make up, I can't make up stuff. So, you know, that's our always been at work, our, like, don't be a black hole year. You know, paper's your friend. Keep where you can keep it, yeah. And to scan it. And I don't know if you're really into electronic filing, but, yeah, I like to scan everything.
I think we're looking to get more and more into that. Also because most of our records become public records. So it's much easier to make, respond to FOIAs and things like that if it's already scanned and you're not having to go through file cabinet after file cabinet to find that one.
Right, and it's quicker too. If you have somebody on the phone, you don't have to put them on hold and go dig around. You can just pull it up on your computer.
Speak at computers.
Tell us about your computer skills and experience with Vadar, Excel, Word, et cetera.
Well, first of all, I have not heard of Vadar. And I think Andrew mentioned it at the first interview. I asked our, I actually did ask our property tax team what they use, and it's a different system. My Excel skills are A+, very proud of that. Word, I get around with fine. It's not my favorite, but I use it. Access, I don't know if you mentioned that, but I've used it. And not that, again, it's not my favorite, but I can do Adobe Pro, I love. And various different tax softwares I use, I use a lot of them. Some of them are similar, some of them are very different. Some of them are basically like DOS and others are, you feel like you're doing coding up there at your desk.
Okay. And you've been able to learn what you needed to use those softwares? In other words, you haven't hit a software in your job that you pretty much have just been stumped and you're just stuck with it?
Well, I'm usually the first, the contact person that gets stuck using all of the softwares in my job is we generally don't get any training. And I like to try to figure these things out.
How does this job fit in with your overall career goals?
I think I can retire with this job. If I'm happy, I'm a very loyal person. So the next, the, if you make a career change, I'm looking for something that I can, I can stay at for at least a number of years.
Is there anything else you would like us to know about you that will lead us in making our decision?
I'm generally a happy person and I'm easy to get along with. I know I mentioned it, but it is very important for me to take part in my work. And I am somebody that I need to feel valued for my hard work. I'm not talking about money. It's, you know, I'd like to hear that I'm doing a good job. And if I, if I'm not, I really don't want that communicated to me right away. Or because I will be under the assumption that I'm doing a great job. Again, I take a lot of pride in it. It would really gotten up to me to otherwise.
Do you gentlemen have any other questions?
I just, I have one and a half, I guess you might say. Do you have any experience working with the company's lenders or anything like that?
It's me, I'm sorry? Like a vendor or...
Lenders.
Oh, lenders.
Yeah, banks and...
No, I don't deal directly with banks.
Okay.
I deal with some government authorities. But generally, there's a personal contact in between us and a financial institution.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's good for now.
Did you have any questions you wanted to ask the board?
Right, thank you.
Yeah, just one question. Do you know when you're gonna be making a decision?
I think possibly tonight, depending on how the interviews go.
Okay.
But depending on how we discuss the options, we may have to push it off a little bit more. And it's potential that we may need a second interview if it gets to that level, but...
Totally. That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
But to be straightforward, we also need this position filled soon. So we're not gonna drag this out.
Okay.
How much time do you need before you start?
I need to give my employer at minimum two weeks. And I would sort of give them more than that, but I'm not gonna give them less than two weeks.
Okay. You got it. Thanks very much. Appreciate you coming out.
Yes, go right ahead.
Just come on, sorry. Felicia, correct?
Yes.
My name's Matt Ervin.
Charlie Chase.
What we're, what we got here is we have a list of questions we're asking everybody. Kind of create a balanced ranking system to give us a little bit to work with when we go into further discussion after. But before we begin, what we'd like to do is just have you have a moment to kind of say something about yourself, why you want the job, kind of just with a brief kind of overview of who you are.
Um, because I'm super nervous. No.
Don't be nervous, we're just, we're just everyday people sitting here.
So this would be my first official treasure collector position. But it is something that I am looking forward to. Right now, I'm assistant treasurer in O'Cam set. I'm working on my fourth year. And that was my first time being in a municipality and I really, really liked it. And I tried to get all, as much application as I can every time they offered me an opportunity to learn. I've gone to that. I should realize I went to a class a few or a couple of them. I think that this opportunity should fit for me. I'm a really quick learner. And I just, I really like making the numbers count. And just seeing the other side of things. I like that there's work to grow. As far as the treasurer, there's always something else around. There's always a loss around. There's always more things that you can branch out and maybe try to make better if there's a need for them to be better. I really like that.
Okay. Get into the questions. Please tell us why you're interested in... Please tell us why you're interested in becoming the next treasurer collector for the town of Berry? And what about Berry makes it a community you wanna work in?
Well, like I said, I like that, but being a treasurer collector, there's always the room to make a difference. There's always the room to save money, well, potentially to save money in places. I really like Berry, I think it's a real good town, I really like, I haven't spent a ton of time here, but every time I do, I wish that I spent more time here. I'm breaking apples in, so I mean, similar small town feel. And I just, I just really like the town area, I like it central and patchy.
Please describe your understanding of the role of treasurer collector within a municipality.
I know about the send out tax bills and receive tax bills. We manage the funds that come into the town and go out of the town, whether that's borrowing or doing, sorry, just the incoming revenue and the outgoing expenditures and you have to receive bills and you have to make sure that everything matches up, you have to make sure that everyone is paying their taxes and if for a certain amount of time they haven't been paying their taxes, there might be tax liens and similar things to that. Like I said, I know that there's, actually I don't think I said this, I have a lot to learn about it, but I, but I'm forward to learning about it, so I'm sure that there's a lot that I don't know yet.
Okay. What strengths would you bring to the position? And how would those strengths support the role you just described?
I am really good at adapting to a changing environment. And when I see a problem, I wanna fix it. And as I mentioned, I like making the numbers match up and I like, sorry.
It's a lot. It's okay to just take a second and keep your thoughts together.
I'm sorry.
He can repeat the question.
Yes, please.
Don't be embarrassed to ask, because some of these are like three-part questions.
Yeah.
I don't even keep straight what they are, so I have to reread them.
So what strengths would you bring to the position? And how do those strengths support the role you just described?
So yes, my ability to adapt to things that are going to you. I'm good at managing multiple tasks and also good at keeping my place so when people are coming in to pay their taxes, if I maybe got interrupted, I'm good at finding where I was and picking up where I left off.
Okay, that's all right, thanks. How does what you did in your past job prepare you for the position of treasurer collector?
Well, my current job right now, I feel like helps prepare me for it because the treasurer collector, as you know, tends to do a lot of, a lot of receivables. And right now, I'm doing accounts payable, so I get to see both sides of it. I also have customer service experience, so when people come in and they're angry or maybe don't understand things, I like to problem solve and I like to help them see maybe what's going on. I wanna explain it to them so that they leave and they feel better about it.
Just your experience in your past job that fits for the treasurer collector role?
So yes, just my customer service experience, my number experience. I have, I've done medical billing, I've done taxes. Right now, like I said, I'm assistant treasurer and I do the accounts payable. So I work with spreadsheets and I work with the bottom dollar, trying to save money and trying to find money other places. So I believe that would have been helpful.
What appeal to you or interested you specifically about this position? What are you looking for in a new position?
The room to, the room to spread wings and learn more things. I did the first year of treasurer collector school this year and I really enjoyed it and I just, there's so much out there to learn about it and I really, really like that. And I like, I like the opportunity that I'd be able to, to start learning at a quicker pace rather than just waiting every year for the school learning hands-on.
Okay. Give an example during your employment history of when you had to think outside the box?
Well, it's not monetary, money related, but one of the things that I do at my current job, I do the facility use, so I have to manage the calendar, I have to manage all of the different facilities in the school. And I had to make sure that everything got, all of the bookings obviously didn't overflow, didn't overbook. And everything used to be done on paper. We, so we would have to send it out and everyone would have to sign it and send it back, and they would get lost in the mix. So I came up with a way to do a full form where everyone has to fill everything online and it automatically gets sent to everyone who has to be approved, has to get approval. So it's streamlined in the process. Another thing that I did in regards to that, the invoices that were being sent out before I had started there, there weren't, there wasn't really any way to track them. So I came up with a different spreadsheet to reconcile them, to make sure that we were receiving the correct amount of money, that they were going into the right accounts and that the correct people were being, were being paid.
All right. Is there a familiarity with Mass General law statutes pertaining to municipal finance?
I am not super familiar with them, but I do know how to look for them. I have signed up for the DLS website, I get all of the newsletters from mass collectors and treasurers. I do have multiple people who are treasurers in other towns who I'm able to bounce things off and I know that there's the lists are. So offhand, I'm not able to just recite them, but I do know where to go to look if I was to.
Describe your work habits, work style, and your ideal work environment.
I am someone who likes to be busy. I like, I like having my stuff organized. It's actually a little bit ironic because during the day, I like having my stuff organized, but my desk, you can't, I'm seeing it. Everything has a place, but it looks, it looks like a mess. But it's always organized and I always have a manner that I do everything. I, I like to stay on top of email, I like making calls. I like managing multiple tasks, but in the same respect, I also like having a project that I can focus on. I guess that's, I'm a kind of type A where I like things to line up and I like to have a routine.
Okay. What type of tasks motivate you and why?
I would say the problem solving tasks, I like, I just like to find a solution where maybe no one has looked before. Another thing that I like to find, and I keep mentioning it, but saving money. The district before, they would just buy things, like they would just look online at one site and just buy things. And I really like to price match and I like to compare and make sure that we're getting the best deal. And I just, yeah, I like, I like that part of it.
What are some of the tasks in your current job you did particularly well?
Like the money saving, processing the paperwork in a timely fashion, making sure that everything is ordered and everything is organized in the way that it's supposed to be. Excuse me, we do P-card reconciliations every month, which is when we print out the statements offline. We have, this month we have ten, I did them today. And I send them out and I make sure that they're reconciled and I cross check the budget numbers to the budget, the account numbers. And I do a really, I have a good job, I manage that. And just all the incoming and outgoing purchase orders, making sure that our numbers, our numbers balance and that we're not over budgeting.
Can you tell us something that you failed at and how you handled it?
I have a Mac this prepared for all these questions and my answers just go up. I can guarantee there's my failures and I can't think of them right now. I can't right now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We'll get back to it.
Yeah, something comes up. Doesn't necessarily have to be work related, just so if something comes up, you can think of it that way too. Can you give us an example of your ability to manage or supervise others?
Right now, I, I help the building and grounds director, I'm technically manage him, but I kind of manage him, make sure that he gets all his paperwork in and kind of just tabs on him to make sure that all of our fix-it requests, which is how we do anything that needs to be fixed in any of our buildings, they come in through fix-it and I make sure that he is following through and making sure that the jobs are getting done. I help the extended day coordinator, I help her manage her money and help her make sure that her P-cards are done and her calendars are done and I help her make sure that everything, all of her ducks are in a row. And I just, I help, I help with, kind of with everyone in the office. But I help them manage and help them find different ways to do things and similar things like that.
Okay. Describe your conflict resolution skills.
I am someone who likes to kill them with a knife. So for example, if it's like an angry, an angry person coming in, a lot of times I've found it, I know this isn't all the time. But if someone has, if someone comes in and they're angry, if you listen to them, sometimes it can help settle the, settle his, set his or her upset and it can help calm them down. Sometimes people just need to be listened to. So that's the first thing I do, I try to listen to them and I try to make them realize they're being heard. So that we can try to find a solution that works for everyone.
How would you handle a confrontation with a coworker or supervisor or more, someone that we work with rather than a town member?
First, I would, I mean, I guess it would depend on what the situation is. Take a minute to reflect and see what maybe the conflict is. Make sure that it's not something that I'm overreacting on before I was to react. And I would try to find a way, if it maybe was that they weren't seeing my side of things or maybe they weren't understanding where I was coming from, try to come at it from a different angle. Try to explain myself from a different angle or maybe see if someone else, if we brought in a third party, if they could maybe help us see eye to eye if we were having a hard time doing that.
If we were to speak with a current and or former employer about you, how would they describe you?
A hard worker, someone who is for the most part, always happy to be at work, always willing to go the extra mile. Basically willing to do whatever, whatever is needed for the job to be done, whether it's working late or coming in early or just different little tasks that maybe no one else wants to do. I, I, being a team player is huge for me and I think it's very important. And I feel like any of my current or former employers would say that as well.
How would your colleagues describe you?
Fun, which doesn't sound, but things kind of jump at you. But pleasant to be around. I am someone who I try really hard not to ever bring anything into the office that's bad. I try to always stay uplifting and again, be positive. I'm a strong advocate of the golden rule, treat others how you want to be treated and I try very, very hard to do that and I feel that my coworkers would say that about me as well. But again, I'm just always willing to lend a hand, so if anyone ever needs anything, they know that they can come to me and help them.
What's the most difficult thing you've had to do in the performance of your job?
Honestly, probably the most difficult that I've got to do so far with this job were the MCPo classes. It was pretty high stress because there's so much riding on it. That's probably the most high stress, but we do, every year we have to do the end of year report. And it seems like we always run out of time, so we're always down to the wire. And that obviously is high stress because it's a state report, you have a deadline. The ordering of everything, that's high stress because you have to make sure everything comes in. The budgets, that's high stress. I guess I don't really just have one example, but the MCPo classes, I think, is probably the most high stress.
Pretend for a second that we don't know what MCPo means.
Oh, so Massachusetts Certified Public Procurement Officers. Basically buying things, spending state.
I understand what you described, what the initial.
Sorry, I guess I forget.
I didn't know what the acronym was.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I was just curious.
Describe your communication skills, both oral and written, and your ability to communicate to with vendors, supervisors, coworkers, elected appointed officials, et cetera.
I think that I'm very well spoken. Sometimes I over-speak things, so there actually be a problem sometimes. But I have no problem rejecting people and just being able, what I need to explain, whether that be on the phone or first I'm working, get email. But I feel like I have very strong communication skills, I'm showing very well tonight, but I swear, I really do.
Do you think you have a better strength either orally or written?
Um, probably orally.
As far as expressing your thoughts and making sure you're understood?
Yeah, I feel like orally, I'm much, I have a much stronger, again, not talking so much tonight, but in the day-to-day, orally as much, I have a better grasp on the English language.
Please describe your experience and approach to preparing for audits, the end of year reporting.
We try to always be ahead of the game. We try to make sure that all of our ducks in a row consistently. We know what they're gonna look for, basically, I mean, we want everything to be right, but because we know what they're gonna look for, we try to make sure that it's all together. We have binders that we keep every current year. We keep them in so that when the, when the auditor's needed, we can give them the binder and basically all of their answers are there. But we're, we are, we try to stay ahead of the game and that's, that's how I am too.
Okay. Tell us about your computer skills and your experience with Vadar, Excel, and Word.
I don't have any experience with Vadar. My computer skills are pretty strong. I've been using Microsoft, Microsoft Office basically since I was in high school. Microsoft Word, I'm very fluent at. Microsoft Excel, I'd say I'm medium, I've been using it a long time and there are a lot of things that I do know how to do. Excel has, seems to have unlimited capabilities, but I don't know all of them. But I actually would like to learn more about Excel. I have used Publisher, I have done newsletters and such for Ganset. But I feel like my skills in Microsoft are pretty strong as well.
Is there a specific accounting software you use for your current job?
We use MS right now.
MS? How does this job fit in with your overall career goals?
This is my career goal. I, that, my goal is to be a treasurer collector or treasurer honestly. But this is my career goal, it winds right up with it.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know about that you'd like aid in us making a decision?
I know I've already said it, but I really, I know that I may be the most qualified candidate that you have tonight, but I am a very strong, quick learner and I really enjoy learning. So that is something I'm really pleased to have in mind. And I, when I'm not nervous, I don't stutter as much.
You did five, yeah, that's good. See if you have a moment to think about something that you might have failed it, but, and how you handle it.
Well, this is a personal one. I recently took custody, well, a couple of months now, we recently got custody of my niece. We have a sister, I'm sorry, but we have custody of my niece. So there's a lot of days where I feel like with her I fail. She's got a lot of stuff going on and I, I do feel like I'm not always the best fit for it. for her just because she has so much going on. But each day I get up and I try again and I don't give up. And we are to be really good again, so I feel like her knowing that she has a permanent place, a permanent safe place, is a, is a win. So even though I feel like I'm failing at it, I know deep down that it's a win. Not sure if that's a really good example, but.
From your perspective?
That's the current one on my heart.
No, that's, thank you. Do you guys have any other questions?
I just have one. Do you have any experience dealing with banks, lending institutions?
Not particularly. I have sat in a couple of meetings with the Treasurer for Mayor Gansett. Tammy Coller is the Treasurer for Mayor Gansett and she has assured me that I can go to her with any questions I have and that she will help me understand the ins and outs of it. So even though I don't have the experience, I know who to go to for.
Do you have any questions for us?
I'm sure that I will as soon as I walk out of this room. One question I asked in my last interview that I would kind of like to repeat is, is there any reason you feel like I wouldn't be a good fit for this position?
The only, the only thing I have right now, part of it might be more that experience with, I shouldn't say that because we didn't specifically ask this, so maybe I'm assuming the lack of experience. But part of that is the treasurer's side, the investment side. What you do or don't have there, where we're trying to go. We're trying to get ourselves into a, you know, a good bond rating situation, so there's going to be some effort there where we're going to make some good decisions and. So that might be part of it, like how much can you bring to the table by yourself versus learning it as you go?
Right.
But again, that's not like a disqualifier, it's just you asked what might be and that might be one of the things I would consider.
I would say that, I'm sure we've been brought three candidates that would all fit, so I don't think there's a problem with a fit specifically against you, of course, in turn back. But yeah, weighing what, one, two, three against each other and looking at the pros and cons is what we'll do afterwards. But as far as a reason you don't fit, no, I have no reason to fit.
Yeah, I should clarify, it's not that you wouldn't fit, it would be more about balancing between the three of you, which one might be the, the strength or the weakness. So thank you very much.
Very well. When, um, do you think, well, here.
There's another question.
They're really like, I'm really sorry.
Potentially tonight.
We should make a decision tonight unless we have a problem.
Unless we can't come to an agreement on someone other than that, we still want to do it very soon. I could see it going more than two weeks at the top. Hopefully it's done tonight though.
And how much notice do you need?
I would need to give two weeks' notice.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you? My name is Matt Irving.
Sharon Ashland.
Good to meet you Sharon.
Gregor Salden.
Sharon Ashland.
Charlie Chase.
So we have a series of questions we've been asking everybody to kind of have a standard like ranking system for us later when we do our own discussions about each interview week. But prior to that, I'd like to just give you an opportunity to kind of speak about yourself, general idea of why you're interested in the job, things like that.
Okay. So I became a poll worker and then became an assistant town clerk about five years ago and then became assistant treasurer. Those were for the town of Holland. Shortly after that, I also became the assistant treasurer in Brimfield and I've been in those positions for five years now. In February, I was, I was appointed assistant treasurer collector. They come, come on the positions there, so that happened in February. And you asked, why would I want to work in Berry? I'm in a crossroads personally where I feel like I've, I was telling the search committee, you sort of are at a point where maybe you stay in the nest and that's a comfortable place or do you push yourself to grow a little bit more and take a leap? So Berry seemed like a, a good spot to take a leap into.
Okay. All right, so we'll begin with the questions.
Okay.
Please tell us why you're interested in becoming the next treasurer collector and what about Berry makes it a community you want to work in?
When I think of Berry, I think that the folks here are a little more down to earth. I think that they're a little more relatable for me rather than say a bigger town or, or city. And again, I think that I'm in a position personally where I'm ready to take some, the next leap. I've just recently passed my treasurer certification for test and so.
Please describe your understanding of the role of treasurer collector within a municipality.
Basic duties are the treasurer receives all funds. Well, the collector collects the funds, transfers it to the treasurer, the treasurer doles it out to payroll and vendors. The treasurer oversees all of the bank accounts, trust funds, loans, things like that. Collector's in charge of basically collecting.
What strength would you bring to the position and how would that strength support your role you just described?
Well, I have five years' experience in the assistant treasurer position, so I feel pretty confident in that day-to-day operation there. Although I haven't been in the collector department very long, I, it's a small enough town in Brimfield where I feel I have a pretty good handle on the day-to-day. So I think also my willingness to learn, I'm a hard worker. In the town clerk position, within my first couple of years, I, I had to do a recount election, a recall election and a special election. And although I know this doesn't pertain to this position, none of those things had happened in Holland in 10 or 15 years. So I had really no one to find out, how do I do that? And so I had to figure out how to do that and do it successfully and I did. So I feel that there may be things that I'm not sure of, but I know how to figure things out and get it done.
How does what you've done in your past job prepare you for the position of treasurer collector?
Well, I've.
Yeah, some of these questions may feel a little redundant, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
It depends also on your own, each individual interview is a previous job experience, so yours kind of fits in a little easier to answer that question.
Right. Well, day-to-day, I am treasurer collector, the assistant in Brimfield, so I take in the collector funds. I, I do all the deposits. I post them in VEDAR. And on the treasurer's side, I input the warrant. I print all the checks for the vendor warrants. I input any new vendors. I do the 1099s, the 1096s.
What appealed to you or interested you specifically about this position? What are you looking for in a new position?
Currently, I'm working three jobs and, and at the time and for the last five years, that's been perfect. That's what I needed for different reasons and now I feel that I'm not in that position anymore. I want one job that I can just focus what I've been learning and, and that's what I'm looking to do.
Give an example during your employment history of when you had to think outside of the box.
It's a good question. It's a little tricky in municipal world because you're sort of locked in with what you can and cannot do. We come up with creative payment plans with our tax title folks. So, not that that's necessarily thinking outside the box, but we've tried to make it so that folks can attain the goal of paying off their tax title, however they can do that. Some folks can put a large amount down and some folks can't, so I guess that's the best example I can come up with right now.
Describe your familiarity with mastering the law statutes pertaining to municipal finance.
I don't know that I could quote them directly. I know of it. Well, like I said, the treasurer's in charge of the bank accounts, the treasurer's in charge of the funds. We need to balance monthly with the accountant. We need to track everything that the collector turns over to the treasurer and. I don't know the specific thought, but I know, I know how it pertains to track everything.
Describe your work habits, work style, and your ideal work environment.
My work habits are I'm rarely ever, if ever, call in sick. I'm always a little early. I'll stay late if needed. I feel I have a pretty good work ethic, so I'm a hard worker. I like to get my tasks done, but not to the point where I'll rush through them so that there are errors, but I, I like to see it get done. My work style, again, I like to check things off the list. I like to feel accomplished. But at the same time, I, I like to, once we know we have that going, then I like to have an atmosphere where I feel people can communicate well. That's important to me.
What type of tasks motivate you and why?
What type of tasks? Well, I've discovered in this position that I really like reconciling accounts. I mean, probably that pertains to the checking off the list, there's something satisfying about that. And also knowing that you can do the job and do it correctly and, and that shows you that you did it correctly because you just zeroed out or whatever the number was, so.
What are some tasks in your current job that you did particularly well?
I am proud of how we've handled tax title in Brimfield. We've, I think this past year, we were able to bring in 94,000 in payments and payment arrangements, which I feel is a win-win for the residents and for the town because the residents may not be aware that there can be payment plans or how that would even work. I wouldn't know if I were in that position. And so we've, we've set it up so that folks can make payment plans and we've been really successful with that.
Can you tell us about something that you failed at and how you handled it?
Something I failed at? I don't know what I can call it. I'm not on top of my head.
Doesn't have to be work-related.
No, I don't know. I forgot to put oil in my car and I blew the engine and that sort of looms over me. I don't know that, that is something that I feel I did fail at because I knew it was leaking a bit and I should have been on top of it and didn't check. So now I sort of have OCD about my oil. So I guess that's how I, now I'm hyper about it.
I could, can I have an example of what you, something that shows that you had a problem with what you've done.
I did have a problem.
With what you've done to change how you're handling it.
Now I have OCD.
Can you give us an example of your ability to manage or supervise others?
I, I'm town clerk in Holland, so I have to run the elections. And so I need to make sure they're going to be there on time. I need to make sure that they're getting breaks when they need breaks. I need to know, sometimes Suzie only wants to work half the day, so who's covering Suzie? That sort of thing. So I've done that.
But how many people normally do you end up supervising during that?
Eight people.
Describe your conflict resolution skills.
With myself or others, or does it matter?
More specifically with coworkers, supervisors, subordinates, the random board members you may have to deal with.
Work-related as opposed to public type of thing.
Okay, so not you're coming to me, you have a problem with Bob, I have the problem with Bob. Is that what you're asking? How would I resolve an issue with a coworker?
Yes.
Okay. So again, I think communication is key. That's very important to me. Currently, in both the town halls that I work in, I feel like everyone there has worked really hard to be able to communicate together. Everybody knows we're on the same team and so because of that, I think that's the way to go. I feel like open communication, even if it's difficult, is really the only way you're going to solve anything. And so I try to find the most tactful way to approach it. You don't want to come off defensive and you don't want to come off like you're attacking whatever the problem is. Also, I try to look at it from their point of view because I feel like, you know, there is a possibility that I'm wrong. And so what is their point? So I think that you have to hear their side as well.
If we were to speak with a current and/or former employer about you, how would they describe you?
They, for lack of sounding not how I want to sound, they all really liked me. They already have said they'll give me really high praises. I feel like they know that I'm a hard worker, that I am there to get the work done, but also that I sort of lighten the mood, keep up the morale.
You got jokes, huh?
I do.
I'll tell you those later.
Usually they're off the cuff.
Good in the moment.
Sometimes.
What is the most difficult thing you have had to do in the performance of your job?
Recently, there was a resident who kept saying they wanted the tax title payment plan that we've been talking about, but yet they never came through. They never signed the agreement. They never came with a payment and so we give them a little bit of time, but then it had to proceed in court anyway and that's really hard, especially in a small town where you know people. That's difficult.
Describe your communication. Describe your communication skills, both orally and written, and your ability to communicate with vendors, supervisors, coworkers, again, appointed officials, other people.
I feel I have pretty good communication skills. I think that it's important to me to communicate my point, and so sometimes I might overtalk it actually, to be honest. Because I wanna make sure that I'm very clear about what I'm trying to say. And I've, I feel I have pretty good skills, I can talk to pretty much anybody. Especially because I've been doing this now five years, so. And also, that's my personality. I think I can talk to people and talk them down or resolve the issue with the vendor, that sort of thing.
Would you say you would have a, are you better written or orally in the way you communicate?
Specifically with expressing your thoughts?
I think it depends what the issue is. I think I can do it written, I'm fairly good at that as well. But I think sometimes you need to make a phone call because things can get lost in translation in the email. So, sometimes I think a phone call is better, just because the other person might not be getting your phone.
Please describe your experience and approach to preparing for audits.
I like to get everything done, so it's the end of the fiscal year and I try to have everything printed out so that way when, do you have time scan?
No, we do not.
Not that it matters. So, when he calls spur of the moment and says, hey, we're coming next week, I already have all my things ready. We have all of our vendor, the W9s are all in a binder, so they can see those. I have all my tax title things all in a file, so I, I try to do that way in advance. When the time comes, it's time, it's ready.
What's your experience working with accountants in that process?
Our accountant is amazing and I love her. She has been great getting things together. Most of the things that I do, because it's like the tax title payments, the tax title, that's more of my and the ten ninety-nines, that kind of thing. Unless it's talking about tax possession, that's the only time I really need to talk to her about that. But, but I have great experience with her, you know, as the relationship. She's been great to work with and for a little while, we did not have her and it makes you realize how important the relationship with the accountant is.
Tell us about your computer skills and experience with Vadar, Excel, and Word.
I'm on Vadar daily. I use the property tax window, the POS, pretty much all of the excise tax title. I use Vadar, like I said, daily. I input the warrant, I print the checks, I do all of that, I do the excise bills that way. I'm fairly good at Excel, maybe eight out of ten. Word, I can do Word pretty well. We use Harper's as well for our payroll, I think you can too.
Excel, yes, okay. How does this job bid in with your overall career goals?
Well, it's been a little surprising because, because it started off as town clerk and then I was assistant treasurer and it just sort of developed. And, and then I found that I really liked it. And, and then I sat in all the treasurer classes and I took the test this past year and I passed it. So that was sort of like a really great thing because it was the hardest test I've probably ever taken. So, I would like to continue that and take collector classes and I like watching the numbers line up.
Is there anything else you would like to know about, like us to know about you that would aid in making a decision?
Well, I use Harper's, like I said, I use Vadar daily. I think I have a really great work ethic, personal.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I was wondering, what, do you feel, how do you feel the communication is between your board and the departments?
I think it's generally improving. I think right now, Andrew's done a good job, pretty much being the hub of the wheel with that because more often than not, we work through him with that type of discussion. We don't generally go around him and speak to department heads directly. That's my experience. Not that I wouldn't speak to you, I don't feel like, oh, can't talk to, you know.
Right.
It's not like that, it's just, if I'm really looking for business-oriented things to discuss, I don't feel like it's right for me not to ask Andrew to gather that information because I don't want him to think that I'm.
Side stepping sort of.
Right, and who knows what he's asking? So, now all of a sudden, you gotta figure out who to prioritize. All the board members and Andrew or just Andrew? Because, so that's where it's kind of a better balance of funneling through him and back to you. But, generally, I feel pretty good with the relationships through the department heads that we have. So I felt good about that. I've also always made, personally, I make it a point that department heads do know though. I mean, technically, Andrew works with the board, so if you ever hit a point where you're just hitting a wall, trying to work with Andrew on something, we are at that next level, but it's expected you try to work through Andrew before you ever come to us. But, if you, you know, so I, I don't feel like there's a closed door, like you can't knock on the door if you think there's something important, but I don't go diving in just because somebody knocked on the door. You know, I, I hear it, I think about it. I'd probably talk to Andrew if I thought it was actually something worth talking about. Otherwise, I'd walk away and just hope that you guys figure it out without me getting involved. That's, that's how I approach it. Because I don't wanna get in the middle of things like that, I don't think it helps usually. But, every once in a while, there might be a reason why it needs to be brought up and things can be discussed. That's how I do it. I don't know if you guys have anything more to say on that, of course.
A little shorter version. I think the communication between this board and the department heads is adequate as far as, we're not really open any close contact with the department heads, that, that is Andrew's job. So as far as that goes, it goes very well. I think Andrew's a lot friendlier and more open, the board is generally more open than previous boards and administrators have been, so I've been seeing an uptake in morale, which is important to me. And as far as talking with department heads, I'm more than happy to talk to any department head at any time. I do talk to a few regularly. But yeah, as far as conflict resolution or issues, it just means if it's something they're concerned they have, I talk about it with Andrew and listen to whatever thoughts they might have, you know, personal and business related, doesn't matter. I'm very willing to talk with people and keep a friendly conversation going, but like, like Matt said, the business is done through the administrator, like we said. Someone said to me, I think, state rep, I think maybe at the, at the opening of the police station, oh, you're putting him in the middle of all this crap here. Instead, we're putting him atop of all this crap here, he's gonna charge him and run it. That's pretty much how it goes.
I, basically, I echo the sentiment of my two colleagues. My, in the past, I've usually gone through the town administrator. Once in a while, I'll stop in just to say hello and see how things are going, but I do not interfere in the operations of any one department. If I have a concern, I'll go through the administrator. You know, it depends if it's a small thing, I might handle it, but definitely when it comes to the overall financial management of town, I go through the administrator all the time. And I think, I think Greg echoed the sentiment, I think that we seem to be running on a smoother, continuously getting smoother between the board and the department. It was pretty rocky there for some time, I don't know if you follow up papers or anything, but.
I'm not aware of anything else.
No, that's okay. But I think, I think it is a lot smoother than it was and I think, you know, it's, it's going about as well as can be expected, so. We usually work through the town administrator.
I think same thing seemed a little adversarial a few years ago and it's, people are realizing.
Yeah.
We don't have to get anybody's job, we want people to, if something's not working, fix it and find out how to fix it and resolve issues. And I think everybody, you know, better because he's dated, but I think the department heads, you have their meetings where, you know, they, they get along better, they, communication through departments is better, I think, and it's, and that's personally a goal of mine to see, not just the departments work together, but to see that the town come together better as well. Reach and have a better contact with department heads and transparency and openness and that's why I'm always willing to listen to anything. One select we can't solve, we do anything. But we can, we can listen and help you convey concerns if you have them. You know, not so much the financial end, but personal ends or personnel ends, things like that's more, will be our input on it, but we're always willing to listen.
In general, my perspective is the board's select's role really is involvement with policy. And after that, it's his job to administer that policy. And that doesn't mean we write the policy and you just take whatever we give you. We need your input, so we better, we don't write a policy that just doesn't fit with what you guys are trying to do and doesn't work. So there is give and take, so there are times where if we're getting into certain policies, there might be questions. Like if I ever am asking you something directly, it's usually just for information. Something that doesn't take a lot of effort, you know what I mean? Like, hey, could you tell me what last week's collection numbers were or something?
Something we don't get.
So, you know, I don't, I, or if you're, if I do ask something, I would expect you to come back and tell me, hey, that's gonna take almost a full day for me to gather and I got other things, so I can't just get that for you. And at least there, I know that it, it's not a simple request and I thought it was and I'm not gonna expect you to respond right away. And I think even these days, if I do that, I'm still copying Andrew in the email. I'm not trying to like ask you something. That would be more something like if I was walking down the hall and I said, hey, would you? I understand if you're like, I, I can't do it right away. You know, there's none of that, like, oh, she's never answering. But you do gotta tell me why you can't, like, at least like, in other words, don't ignore it. That's where I'm at with communication. If you make a request, just, I'll see what I can do, I gotta work with Andrew, I got a lot of things on my table right now. At least I understand.
Right.
If you say nothing, all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, what did I do? And that's the whole part about the communication, you've even mentioned before, just as long as it's communicated, I think we all work fine.
I would not answer an email or.
Right, and that's really where I'm at, it's just more of a, I try not to get involved at that level, but I, I am one that needs to know information. I think Andrew will admit that, that I'm one that, hey, could I get this or could I get that? I need to see that, I would like to see that because, and it's not always clear to other people why I'm asking, but it's a bigger picture thing to me and as I start to put it together, it starts to figure itself out. So that's my, as you were kinda asking. I guess one other thing that didn't come up very clearly, and I know you've asked before, was your experience working with banks or lenders and then the investment side of the treasurer's office per se.
The investment side, I haven't really had to do much with. I have met them, I've met the folks at Bartholomew or the different bankers that come in and I see how it's, how the transfers are made, but I haven't had to do that hands-on.
All right then, I'd like to say thank you very much.
Sure, thank you for inviting me.
We'll probably try to work through some things tonight, if we're lucky, we'll be making a vote. Thanks a lot, Sharon. So, you guys, how would you like to start this discussion? The numbers first or just start your general feelings first?
Well. We always do these slightly different agendas, but I think maybe Ross scores first if we have a quick ranking like we've done before, give him a quick ranking, one, two, and three. And then we can get into the why of that, maybe come up with a couple of pros and cons, each if we need to. If we all rank one, two, and three the same right now, the bad, we probably don't need a lot of pro and con conversation. But if we get a mix-up, then we can come up with pros and cons and through discussion of that one thing, we, we rank them after the fact as we did last time and that gave us a better understanding of the draft and why. That makes sense?
Yep.
So we, we start off probably with what we think, if we're all on the same two reasons, we're, we're good to go. But if we have differences, then we gotta listen to all the pros and cons for those and then kind of, once we've all processed what we each had to say about it, we can kind of reevaluate. That's how we ran the administrative position, I believe, and what else we do, the senior center position, the director, that as well, that, that actually bounced around a bit to me then.
Yeah, that, that was.
Kind of tight.
Yeah.
Well, given the exact numbers, I can say I, I scored them in the first order as we saw them, first, second, and third candidates. Scores ranging from the lower one thirty, high at one forty-one. So it's nine percent difference, so between them. Somebody might score all fours and fives and I'm scoring higher on the scales, but yeah. Something I particularly liked that they all answered was, when I say, how do they prepare for audits? They all basically said the same thing, you're prepared by being prepared. I, I, that's, to summarize all their answers, I like that in everyone. There are different things here and there.
My numbers were, I had two identical numbers and one that was only four points less than that. So, I almost came out even with the numbers. I definitely believe the last candidate has a stronger municipal understanding, there's some experience. Obviously, stronger software knowledge of the softwares we use currently. Came off like someone that could learn, do what she needs to do to get where she needs to go. The middle candidate, I think, also similarly has a lot of municipal experience working through the school district up there, the Maragans School District. So, I think again, maneuvering your way through municipal finance wouldn't be completely new. The first one I thought is someone that, again, municipal would be a whole new world, but definitely. The first one I thought is someone that, again, municipal would be a whole new world, but definitely did not appear to be a challenge that would be too difficult to pick out. The one thing about first interviewer, you, uh, Jenny? Yeah, Jennifer. Is her experience seems ever, she seems to bring something the other two doesn't, though, when it comes to the somewhat understanding the investment side of the world and stocks and the whole. I'm not saying that how big or big that doesn't play. I know that on, it is a factor, though, for treasurer to better understand what we were just recently talking about, investment policies and things like that. That might be something where she could help bring something to the table, either from her previous networking and experience of who she's worked with before that we might not get with the other two. So I guess what I would say here is if you chose all three, and they all could meet a certain high potential, but it may not be walking in the door, who has the higher potential do you see to benefit the town? And right now, I'm having a hard time with that, because I think all three of them could do. I think the last one probably would be the strongest one to come in the door, be able to step right in, kind of keep it going, and then grow with it. So I just don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, my thought, I would kind of agree with you. First, I think, Andrew, you've brought us three good candidates, and I think I had our last candidate ranked as number one, I guess, on points and whatever, being best prepared, come in, the certifications, that sort of thing, I think, ready to go, and I think where we're trying to get our bond rating reestablished, she might be in the best position to help us. That said, the first candidate we interviewed with a corporate background might be able to bring something to the table with that type of background, I think, that would help us with some of the bigger lending institutions and stuff, but I feel that right now, just on the surface, that Sharon would be our best, best bet. The other candidate we interviewed, I just, I think she could do the job, but I'm not sure she's quite ready for the position itself. There's no question in my mind that, you know, she probably has the ability to do it, but I don't know if we're in a position to wait for her to learn it. And I guess that's the difference between the top and the third. My other candidate, was it Jennifer? I'm pretty sure could come in and do the job. Take some more doing. I think it would take a lot more support on your part. But so I think Sharon would be the one I would have to say would be the best for, best for Barry right now. And I think the experience municipal government showed in the question that she asked us, obviously, she's been around around town government a little bit, so I thought that was an interesting question, but, so that's my, my position on it.
So we've all ranked the same person as the top choice?
Well, I'm still personally as top choice. My numbers are the exact same for the first and the last. They got, and the only difference is I'm wondering if sometimes I wonder if the first interviewee, because of that corporate, could come in and bring a different view of the treasurer's investment side than we've been able to do prior, because we've had.
If we go back.
She's, our, I mean, our previous treasurer collector's been a great collector, but the treasurer was the side that she did her best with, but she couldn't, she couldn't even really focus on, because we weren't even in a position to really have any strength in investing.
We've done these interviews in the past. One of the things I talk about is we do pros and cons, and I think we look at the cons that matter here. And Jennifer seemed a little, she seems timid. She's not good with conflict resolution, not good with, you know, direct confrontation, that you're speaking out about things. And I think that, if she should, and she said honestly, when you internalize things, that's, that's the problem when people internalize things, and I see that. Especially in that position, you have to be able to take things by the, by the ones directly and confront them right off the bat, and I don't see her as being strong in that. In her lack of experience for this type of particular work, so that's, I liked her, and I was very happy with her, but that's the only reservation I have there. Then we get the second candidate, much more confident herself, much better communicating, expressed herself a lot better, is much more pleased. And frankly, the last candidate, having this experience, five years, but already passed the test of the treasurer, I think makes her just the right person for the job. Beyond what her scores were for me, my, the things that scored low on me were, you know, some of the different responses. Scored very low for some people, but I didn't like, you know, conflict resolution, of course, again, if it was a big one. That's, that's why I scored her that way, and really looking at the negative for the first one for her, set her up, make compared to these other two. And for the other two, I don't really have a negative, but the positive was that the fact that she's in that position, she's still in that position. And she's already passed her certification for that was, was important.
And the assistant collector we hired, right, also came from the banking industry. So that, that also adds a different level of support on that side that I was talking about, where she might have a little bit more the networking and investment side, or working with banks more than the treasurer coming in, working together, they'll be able delegate and work it all together, I think. Plus Nancy's still willing to give us some time to pass on and share and keep moving, so that would also be a positive right here. I don't know, do you think we're ready to, somebody just wanna make a motion, or do you think there's more we gotta do?
I think that Sharon is, would be the best candidate for this position. I really do. Between her experience in the position, I did have an opportunity to sit down with Nancy to totally coordinate. She really pointed out Sharon's application, and said that she had, you know, she knew her, she could vouch for her, for her character, thought that she would be a great fit for our town, so I have no reservations at all about having Sharon as, as her top candidate.
Okay. And so I make sure you spend more time with them than else. I wanna make sure that we weren't missing something, got something, different take outside of this office, because even your process, sometimes it follows them a little bit.
Yeah, I got you. Right, they, they had a whole different showing, and it, right, I got you.
So to that point, I'd recommend that we offer the job to Sharon Ashly.
Ashley, I'll second it.
Call for a vote.
I won't wait. Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
So we shouldn't set up negotiations and things like that?
Further time works for you guys best. We can give them three dates.
Is this on time?
I know, that's stealing.
Before we, before we do far this, if, if she declines, I would recommend we go with our second candidate. And I'd like to just, you know.
Second date vote.
To me, not Jennifer, because of her timidness.
Okay, the second interview. Which is the order you guys recommended?
Yeah, I did, I scheduled.
Interviewed in reverse of the recommended, okay.
So I would just, if, if Andrew can't, you know, get her to agree that we move on to the second candidate, time to manage.
This is a contract position, so it's a board negotiation, right?
Right, but she may just decline and say, you know, I had an office in somewhere else and not taking it, so it's in the off chance that she's interviewing for two, one of the two places and.
Just move to the next.
Do you wanna do it as a whole board negotiation, or do you wanna do it as one member of the board to discuss it and bring it back to the full board?
I'm okay with one board member or.
We have generally the.
If you wanna get the first laydown of your recommendation before you pull us in, I mean, do, in other words, do one of us think we need to be there to start?
Yeah, I just don't wanna walk out and bring it to you guys, and then be on, be on two different pages. That's, that's my only concern. I think we would drag out if I don't at least have one representative from the board in it to.
To that end, we should discuss briefly what we want to.
Need to know what we're paying.
Do you wanna.
The job descriptions, the job description's gonna be there already, but we really much wanna just talk about salary, so.
To discuss.
It's not on the agenda. We'll have to push that to another meeting due to an executive session, I believe.
I guess, true, I'll defer to the proposed salary schedule that I had presented to you guys for consideration for 2020.
Were you, were you still identifying that as a contract position, or were you saying, put that into the scale?
I would put that into the scale. I'd have to talk more with Brett about the logistics on it, but I know that was one of the, the outgoing treasurer collector that she would, didn't have any provision on the scale for, for growth, so the thought was to put the position on there, and just let memorialized contracts say in accordance with the, with the salary schedule, but at the end of the day, if it's, if we don't have that currently in place, that was not a number that was advert, that was advertised as.
How do you think the treasurer collector position compares to the town clerk in A?
I would say it would probably be about one step higher.
A little bit higher, okay.
Just in the matter of it being that combined position. I think if you had them as split positions, they'd be equal.
Okay.
But that combination of the two raises it up. I'll give it, I'll give it to you in terms of.
I mean, generally, I guess this is what I'm thinking. I would prefer that most of this contract negotiation defers to the personnel policy for any and all rules and regs that all the other employees get. I don't want a special contract that treats them like a police chief or a fire chief, or someone that.
You're right.
So I'd prefer that, so we're dealing with the same type of paid time off accumulations and all of that. I don't really wanna get into negotiating special favors for this position over what we'd normally treat other employees. I think a fair wage is what I'm looking for, so I'm kind of open to that. We just gotta keep it a little bit in line right now with other people we already have doing similar, that's why I was asking about town clerk. I don't wanna go like way over her, but I don't wanna undercut either.
Right, yeah. The, the way I had it proposed, posed, one step higher. If town clerk was a grade six, this would be a grade seven position at the same type of hourly rate compensation scale as the accountant, but the, the accountant would work, works less hours, so it's still a higher or a higher rate, or higher amount of salary.
I guess the only thing I would ask is, do you believe, and I'm not saying it's necessary, but the hours of the office, did we or not, did we or did we not do a good job explaining the hours back when Nancy was originally hired, so she understood what, and what I mean by that is I would just ask you to think about it and think, okay, are there any late hours or any times of the year where this is your hours, but the deadline's coming, you can't say, I only had thirty-two hours of work that week, so.
Right, I, I.
That's all I mean. We gotta somehow still not let that be the reason we don't do certain things.
My proposed on the schedule is to have it classified as thirty-seven hour per position in comparison to the accountant, which would be a thirty-hour position. In our reality, it should be, you know, two hours before, another hour after public closing per day, for the most part. Or an hour before and two hours after. Either, either way, you're putting in more time than, than what the office is open to.
Right, time to come in and actually prep, do something, do the stuff that doesn't deal with the public. Okay.
And give us some, some time, though, people at the window or whatever, to, just, I think, for.
I mean, generally with what you said, I'm, I'm very comfortable with you starting the layout of the negotiations, and then even the, the window you're talking about salary fitting makes sense to me without giving it. The only thing I would try to see if you can do is figure out the potential additional cost that Nancy might, and see if we can keep that within this year's budget by, because I don't know if we can, but it, just keep that in the consideration, because we didn't put it on the warrant to increase that budget.
Well, since we haven't yet, what we could do is, once we come to a conclusion, that would give us a better idea as to where that's gonna line up, if we can still have that as a warrant article.
We need two weeks prior to the date, though, to have that added to the warrant article, so that it actually can be published, signed, and posted. It's almost three weeks, one week to do it, two weeks to have it posted.
If, if I contact her tomorrow, we, it, it all kind of depends on when we sit down, or when we can sit down to discuss.
But yeah, if we had everything figured out by the ninth of November, you know.
My thought was that.
Almost three weeks to get that done.
Yeah, we get this wrapped up in time that this, that she could start the ninth of November, so we should.
Which means we would know if we wanted to add something to the, open and close yard, warrant again, just to add a budget adjustment for this transitional. Okay. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So we're here, we don't have a meeting set up for next Monday, correct, or do we? Am I missing?
We don't.
Okay. The economic development ones this Wednesday?
Yeah.
Those are the only two meetings I thought I saw this week, but I was surprised that that's it, because it feels like I'm booked every night, but I wasn't. Maybe it's more the, the personal calendar fills in all the other days.
The economic development at the score.
That's right here. This is.
Oh, this is economic. I got my economic development.
Development plan.
Plan.
Yeah.
I got my committee and plan and stuff.
Do you think there's benefit for us, or do we even have the time to try to set up a meeting for next Monday, or we? I sent an email to Andrew talking about November fifth, our normal Monday, first Monday of the month meeting. Might be better for us to just focus on just the marijuana bylaw and have the planning board invited here, so we could all just.
On the fifth, you mean next Monday?
On the fifth, so maybe next Monday might be worth having a meeting where we can put in some of those, you know, things that would end up on the fifth, we could try to do so that.
Hey, we're out ahead of time, can, couple days.
Yeah, meeting minute, all those little random procedural stuff we just do. If we can get that done next week and not have to do it the following Monday, it might.
Well, if we do that and also put the marijuana bylaw discussion on it, we could start to work on that, so, to go in.
Right.
To the meeting prepared.
And then maybe Monday, you could propose whatever you can negotiate with the contractor, and we can actually just agree to it and go on.
Yeah, I really need a copy of the zoning bylaws, because I gotta make sure that they go in, and I've been having a hard time getting a copy.
They, the same one since annual town meeting is the only one they've been presenting so far.
I, I hacked that one up to the point of getting it in. I just didn't wanna do all that legwork and do all the typing out then, I have to say. Oh, well, based on our discussions, we've done a whole bunch of different stuff with that, so.
They are meeting tonight, I understood. At least they're on the schedule, so I think they also added an additional meeting to try to keep themselves moving forward, so. Or do they normally meet on, they, they used to be a Tuesday meeting, right?
Have a lot of changes to make.
Planning board. Right. So this week they're meeting again tonight. Yeah, they're meeting right now upstairs, but I think it was so they could spend some time focusing on something. Yeah.
Yeah, and if we meet Monday, we talk about our end, and talk about the contract, we're gonna be better off and ready for.
I'd love to have two red line versions to say, okay, pick which side this is gonna be, you know, the specific topic is gonna be part of, so.
Okay. So let's do that then.
Okay, so next Monday. And sorry if I missed it, but I, I'm just gonna meet with her or as maybe a member of the board.
To start with, you just, you, you draft kind of a basic contract agreement.
Okay, we'll be talking, I'll talk to Brett tomorrow, so kinda how we, that's gonna be a labor agreement rather than a contract.
Right, because we're not trying to put a lot of things that you can ask for and we negotiate for.
Yeah, more like an MOU to the personnel.
It's a job offer, and the job offer.
You might wanna think of putting language in there that would. Change the annual increases if we do propose to give a classification plan, we don't have to redo an MOU, we can just say.
My claim would be to.
As long as it doesn't give you less a year, you just fit into it and we're not negotiating annual increases into a three-year contract now, it's just. I don't see a problem with someone saying yes because then they don't have to sit with us every day, every three years contracting it because it'll just become an unappointed employee. Which for some might make them feel more secure in their job.
Who wants to feel secure in their job? Come on in.
Why not sit?
Gotta have hammer drop on any time, come on.
I mean, it's, so yeah, I mean, it's not like we negotiated the contract with our D P W superintendent, but we did our treasurer collector, so. It was just a miss in the classification plan, is what that was. That was what, probably because we went from elected to. And we just had to get it done, so we just said, I'll do the MOU type contract thing and. I have nothing more. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to speak to tonight?
Just a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at eight.
That's my twenty-two missed emails.